I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, hello everyone. Apologize about the typo. We were supposed to start at seven. Future meetings will go back to seven, but we didn't want to change it and couldn't change it. So that means we got to talk quicker tonight and still get you out in time. Anyone here for public participation? I do not have a report tonight, skipping over that. So I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Any board members have any questions on the minutes? Hearing none. Any board members have any questions on the warrant or the budget transfer? The library transfer? Yes, Jeff?
One question on the emergency building repairs that's in the warrant. Do you have any idea what those were?
Was that the boiler over at Fon Hollow, I believe? They had to crack the boiler.
A jockey? Boiler was jockey?
There was boiler, jockey, yeah.
Jockey or Fon Hollow?
And then some hot water.
Hot water heater.
Hot water.
Hot water at Fon Hollow.
Do away something. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, just to your point, one of the things we said if, you know, we run the, I mean, that line was cut down the bare bones from last year's adjustments. We said we would hit, you know, if we need to. Hopefully we can cover it somewhere else if we need to. We'll cover it with facilities, revenue accounts, facilities.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Jerry, second. Christine, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the reports of the committee, starting with our students. Hello.
Good evening, everyone. I hope we're all having a marvelous Monday, and I also hope we've been enjoying the beginning of the new semester. As a senior, I know I've been living it up. The stress of college applications and mid-year reports have passed, and we have a couple months of relative relaxation to look forward to. In the meantime, colleges have begun responding, releasing decisions, and many seniors now have the opportunity to maybe receive scholarship money from the Monroe Scholarship Committee. Overall, it's been a nice two weeks of Semester Two, and I forecast a few, a bunch more good weeks to come. I would be remiss if I also didn't mention the Massey Ethics Bowl performance two weeks ago. Massey was able to place number four in the state, was the highest-ranked public school in the competition. If you guys didn't know, Rhea and I are dedicated ethics bowlers, so, me especially, as captain and a four-year Ethics Bowl member, I'm extremely proud of the team that we've built over the years, and I'm especially glad to be leaving our student organization in good hands.
Every time there's a new event being advertised in the cafeteria during lunch, it's a momentous occasion, or at least I think so. This time, it's tickets for South Asian Night, which are being sold starting this week. This year's South Asian Night is on February 21st from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Tickets are $15. All of us here are taking part in planning it, and we're so excited for students to come out and have a great time celebrating South Asian culture.
As third quarter begins, junior meetings have begun. Our counselors are helping us plan for next year so we can feel as prepared as possible for college admissions season. The junior class has been given the opportunity to attend the National Hartford College Fair with over 200 college representatives for students to discover the school for them. For today's sports report, girls' basketball played Stratford last Friday and won, and earlier they also won against New Britain. For boys' basketball, Massey beat New Milford 67 to 57. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board members have any committee reports?
Pension committee, but Joe already mentioned it in his weekly report. So pension committee's looking good. You know, we have it, we had some opportunities to change, but didn't see the need, so in good shape.
Okay, good. We're still in the 90-ish percentage. I remember when I was on, it was nice, 94.
Yeah, we're higher.
96, yeah.
Yeah, 96.
Yeah, that's great.
And we assume the same rate of return.
Rate of return will remain the same, yeah.
It's probably about 70.
Okay. Any other reports from board members?
We have three policies up for vote tonight.
Okay, and you met tonight?
And we met tonight.
Okay, very good. Moving on to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
We got it. We'll start with Jen with the special education report.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, Jen.
Okay, we're going to start with the enrollment. We had one student move in in the month of January. We had four students that were dismissed or moved out of district, and we had 11 students that were made eligible, which brings us to a total number of 659. So that's our enrollment right now. Our financials, if you take a look at the packet that I sent out, our spending in outside agencies increased by $55,000 last month. Our tuition public increased by $36,000 last month, and our tuition private increased by $300,000. And we know that's a shocking number, but we've been, I've been talking about this for months, that we had some students that we placed, and then those encumbrances finally came in for their tuition and transportation. So that's why that number is so large. Our home bed instruction increased by $11,000, and our system-wide transportation, which would coincide with the tuition, increased by $112,000, same reason for those encumbrances and spending. Our transportation preschool line increased by $9,200. That's pretty typical this time of year because we add that extra bus on because of the numbers of students is increasing. Professional independent services increased by $11,000. Those are our psychiatric evaluations and other evaluations that we can't do in district. We also had some equipment repairs and assistive tech, with assistive technology devices for certain students, so that was another $2,200 we spent. So it was an expensive month. We had a lot of expenses. Our excess cost up to, we're getting our first installment at the end of February. I don't know if anybody's read anything in the news, but across the state, the percentage has decreased. So typically, we get 60%. Last year, it decreased a little bit to 68, and we found out we're only getting 60% this year.
Normally, it's 70%.
What did I say, sorry?
Yeah, 60.
Sorry, 70%, we were down to 68% this year. 60, 60, 60. So we are getting more money than we budgeted for, but that's because I've spent more money. So we budgeted $740,000 for this year. We're actually getting $961,000. So it's $221,000 more than we anticipated. But again, that's because we are spending more money, because we have rising costs, and we have students with complex needs. So like I said, we should get that first installment at the end of February, and then we'll get the next one probably like May-ish, April, May. So that's where we are right now. So obviously, that amount of money is going to offset our bottom line right now, but that's where we are.
Jen, what, that 10% difference from our, what we would traditionally get 70% to 60?
Yes.
What's that roughly? Do you know, number-wise?
It's about $15,000 per point.
$15,000 a point, roughly.
Yeah. I don't know the exact number.
Say that one more time?
So each percentage point is about $15,000.
So it's about $150,000.
Yeah, okay.
Does anybody have any idea what Lamont's talking about?
There has been a, I don't know what the, I don't know what the governor's talking about, but I do know that there has been a very concerted effort to address special education, excess cost in this legislative session. I know there's been some talk about, you know, possibly offering some help, you know, this fiscal year. But I know moving forward, it's something that's, you know, as I'm tracking, as I've been tracking the bills, there have been a number of different legislators who've put in something for excess cost.
So once coming up next week, $54 million extra for special ed across the state. Don't know if it's going through. Haven't read the bill. I just saw it, it was shot out all, all more.
For this current fiscal year.
Yeah.
Lots of conversation. They're really trying to decrease the threshold, which would be huge for us, because you have to hit $85,000 in order to even qualify for excess cost. So if we can lower that threshold, that would be something that would really make a big difference.
Jen, you mean the four and a half times? Yeah, oh, okay.
And we're getting, Jen, so we're getting 60% backed. We did budget 65.
For next year.
For next year. And this current fiscal year, what did we budget?
No, we budgeted, I think we budgeted 70.
I think we budgeted 70 this year. We've got 65 budgeted for next year, yeah.
And the state also put us in a situation, because they want to change the burden of proof.
Correct.
How many states still do that?
Yeah, there's.
It's like for red.
Four states. And I remember when we went to one of those legislative things, they said, "We know what you're going to ask, and the answer's no, because the advocates and the lawyers will make sure we don't get reelected, so don't even ask us." And that was the last time I ever went. I'm like, I'm not, what's the point of those legislative meetings if they don't give a round?
I feel the same way, and that's why I told Joe I was, I was bowing out of all future ones, too. It's, I'm wasting my time. If they're not going to lose election.
They're not helping us fund the schools.
Right. If there's no fear of not getting reelected, what's the point?
That's all they care about.
Right.
So Joe, to correct myself, he put in $54 million for the second year of his two-year budget.
Which is this year?
Right.
Which is this year?
Yeah.
Jen, how many outplace students do we have?
35 right now? 33 or 35? 35, right, 35.
So that's about 5%?
Mm-hmm. It's exactly 5%. That's what we presented.
How many of those are settlements?
They're not settlements. I don't want to include settlements in there. They're not.
Okay. And what about, like, legal expenses? Are they trying, compared to last year?
Compared to, they're very similar. It's going very well right now, so.
Yeah.
But they're very similar to last year. I budgeted the same amount of money that I did this year that I did last year, and we're fine right now.
So you're getting more settlements this year, or is it about the same as last year?
No, I only have like three.
Okay.
Not a lot.
Which is comparable to last year?
Mm-hmm. Actually, I had a couple more last year.
Anything else for Jen?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Just touch on a few things. First of all, I thank Dan Croft, Sheila, and Ron for attending this special meeting of the town strategic planning committee. Was that last?
Monday.
Last Monday night. All the town departments were there to share their five-year capital plans. Pretty much the focus of it is on the projects for the next school year, fiscal year '26. So for us, that's the pool heating system, the replacement of the stadium bleachers, the installation of the video board at Massey, at Jockey Hollow, it's the installation of the new boiler, the HVAC engineering assessment at Steptney, it's paving, and at Fon Hollow, it's the painting of the gym, ceilings and walls. We also discussed combining some of the projects in the plan for both logistical reasons and to kind of smooth out the requested expenditures over the next five years. So, for example, rather than closing the field, the stadium field down for two summers, you know, looking at the bleachers and combining the bleachers and the turf and track project in the same year. Same thing with Jockey Hollow, look at if we're ever going to put air conditioning, align that with the Blues project as well. And like I said, that would also kind of smoothed out the capital plan. It's right now, I think right now, the, like, next year, we're looking at just a little over a million dollars. And then the next year, we jumped to like five. The next two years was two and a half, and the next year was a little over a million. So the idea, the thought behind this was, you know, could we move some stuff around and just kind of smooth that out?
We did have a very nice conversation with them, and they're open to juggling some things to spread that around, mainly the Jockey Hollow air, bumping it up, actually, so.
Yeah.
Possibly, so that would be great.
Yep. Any questions there? Thanks, Jeff. Ad hoc facilities met on the 23rd. Michelle Miller from Silver Petricelli discussed a few of the scenarios that were brought up as additional configurations to analyze. So the group had talked about, hey, what if we looked at some different scenarios here? So she shared some different scenarios, but also looked at some different school sites throughout town. I don't think any of them were really viable places. I don't think there was a lot of palate for putting a school at Wolf Park right now, so. But as we look at these new configurations, we've also discussed opportunities to bring programming back in district. So I had asked Jen at that meeting to share out, you know, kind of the feasibility and resources that would be needed to put a therapeutic day program in if we did have space for it, and Jen did that. Just out of my place. And our next meeting is next Wednesday. So one of our goals, or our big goal at that meeting, is to narrow down where we are. Right now, we have, I think we're looking at like six different configurations. And I know we want to kind of narrow that down to a couple so we can really start to seek some input from the town and get some, you know, either some surveys out or some public participation or something. So that's next Wednesday. Any questions there?
Do you feel like we're trending in a direction where we, you know, can really ultimately come up with a final product? Whether, whatever it is, have shelves ready, be in, you know, moving towards a solution?
I think we're moving in that direction, but there's definitely some hurdles, for sure. There's a lot there. Last thing I just wanted to mention, I just want to thank Bill Holsworth, who's always looking out for the best interest of the entire town, including the schools. At a recent Connecticut Council of Municipalities meeting, Bill connected with a representative from Titan Energy to discuss the possibility of adding solar to the roofs at Jockey Hollow. We've talked about this in the past, that, you know, it's so difficult to try to do that because the addition of solar, we've always worried about nullifying warranties, but this comes at a pretty convenient time for us because we can do it now while we're looking at replacing the roof at Jockey Hollow. So I have asked that representative to come to our meeting on the 18th, so if anyone has any questions, that'd be a great time to ask it. Hopefully, we can look at, you know, some ways to save some money, you know, in the future.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Jeff, just a little more on your question about with facilities. I think, you know, obviously, the whole town's question is chalk hill, chalk hill, chalk hill, and that's kind of the elephant in the room that we want to, we want to answer first. That's really, we have to tackle that issue before we can tackle anything else. The other issue is that we're, we are realizing that no matter what we do, whether it's a renovation or two renovations or whatever it is, you know, a build as new, we still must continue with all of the regular maintenance of all our other schools. They all need everything, so that needs to stay in capital. And one thing I think we may need to look at with all of this, with between facilities and Dan and Ron, is maybe a 10-year capital or a five-year official and a five-year beyond that, so that we can really look at all these different projects. Because we still have to fix bathrooms, we still have to do roofs, we still have to do paving, you know, gym floors. All those things still have to get done. So may, maybe a better idea to kind of really look at it that way, just an idea. But it's coming along, but it's, we don't want to rush it either.
No, I think it's a good point, just because, you know, whatever the decision or the outcome is, whether it's a new school or a remodel, that those don't happen over a summer, right? Those are going to be a years-long process, so it might be a better idea to look, have a broader view of at least capital once we come up with a decision where we have a better idea of timeline.
Right.
They're figuring Hillcrest, because they're doing it over, getting trouble.
They're figuring 14 months on that to re, to put that building up.
Well, they did Frenchtown, it's the same architecture, did Frenchtown, and they did Frenchtown in that amount of time, so they feel.
It's aggressive, right.
Did you see what they got to as reimbursement? Superintendent Cobza?
I did not.
44% Superintendent Cobza. This is why I keep on yelling at the facilities meeting, "We've got to go up to Hartford and complain."
Yeah.
Well, if you mean, if trouble got it, then why can't we?
It's a great question.
Just, I'm just wondering, that's, yeah, it was in the paper, 44%.
I wonder if that's the reimbursement that I wonder if they're doing, because I know there's a lot of other.
I don't know, you'll have to read.
Things for.
The article explains it in the post, but I fixed my eyes on the percentage.
It's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, it's big. Okay. Any questions for Joe? Just to, no? Okay, unfinished business? Christine, policy, second review, would a vote anticipated?
So we have first policy, 4112-2, certify certification, revise. This updated the policy to reflect our district practice, including cave language, and updated the legal references to the policy. Then 4112.6 and 4212.6 is certified, non-certified personnel records. This is updating the policy to include cave language and reflect our district practice and updated legal reference to the policy. And then the last is 4116, personnel certified, tenure status, updating the policy to include cave language and reflect our district practice, updating legal reference to the policy. So these were really just a lot of language and legal references.
Questions? Dennis, no? Sue, you're aware of these?
Yes.
Okay. They were minor, legal stuff, yeah, okay. Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve policy 112.2, 4112.6, slash 4212.6, and 4116 as presented? Dennis, can I have a second? Jerry, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We're going to go to new business. Joe?
We have a couple of presentations tonight. First, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Cara Tanner with us. Cara is our elementary instructional leader in ELA. She's done a tremendous job picking up what Kim Nelly left off last year. Still needs support. Yeah, yeah. Cara is a literacy expert. She also serves as a professor at Sacred Heart, where she instructs reading specialist candidates in best practices for early literacy acquisition. I think we're really, we're really fortunate. I almost said unfortunate. We're really fortunate to have her. We've seen some great gains by students. I actually sat in an MTSS, the Multi Tiered Systems of Support meeting with Cara today and the second grade team at Monroe. And we're seeing really just some tremendous gains by our students, and a lot of that is under the leadership of Kim and now Cara. So Dr. Tanner's going to update us on our literacy journey, as well as share the resources that we've decided upon. This is kind of a carryover from the conversation that we've had for a couple of years. Take it away.
Great, thank you so much. And I'm so excited to be here with all of you today, and it's been such a joy to join Monroe Public Schools and be a part of this community. And I am excited to share our proposed new curriculum for reading and writing K5, which is Bookworms, published by Open Up Resources. And before I start unpacking Bookworms, what I really want to do is go back to the timeline of how we got to where we're at today. And so in July of 2021, Connecticut passed the Right to Read legislation, mandating that all Connecticut public schools would address the five pillars of literacy, which are phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Then a year and two months later, we all were waiting to see what they would unveil as their curricular resources, and they approved five Big Box programs. And I like to think of Big Box programs like a TV dinner. It has all of the components that you would want, but may not be the best quality. And so then in January, they released a waiver, and with the waiver, a lot of districts, including Monroe, applied for that waiver status to be able to continue using what they had and then supplement with Gold Star programs. In December, Monroe was classified as being transitional in the waiver process, and then the state also released a compendium of resources and approved curricular resources. So here's what our goal was for Monroe. We wanted a comprehensive literacy approach, and we had Hegrity, a Gold Star curricular resource for phonemic awareness. And then this year, we implemented Ufly Foundations, which is a Gold Star phonics curricular resource. And then that left us with this missing puzzle piece of wanting to expand vocabulary, build knowledge, incorporate grammar and mechanics, develop fluency and comprehension, elevate instruction, meet state requirements, and then have minimal supplementation. So we were doing all of those things of vocabulary, fluency, comprehension, but with other resources and having to supplement. The group of the Monroe Right to Read Committee then looked at the compendium of resources and recommended us to look into Bookworms and Witten Wisdom. And so that's when I jumped on board and we started to pilot those curricular resources. First, we established a collaborative action team comprised of administrators, our literacy consultants, our piloting classroom teachers, special education teachers, non-piloting classroom teachers, and a multilingual learner teacher. And so as we piloted, for those piloting teachers, I had kindergarten and first grade at Fon Hollow, so Lauren Magnuson and Katie Severson, Katie Wiley and Tiffany LaConti, and they were supported by Lisa LeBlanc. Then at Monroe Elementary, we had second and third grade piloting, so Michelle Vanderhayden and Monica Reyes, Cara Bouchard and Kim Iantoni, with Witten Wisdom and Bookworms for third grade, and they were supported by Sharon McCauley. Then at Steptney Elementary, I had fourth and fifth grade piloting, so Ashley Gilby and Madison Ventreska, and fifth grade Allison June and Mackenzie Greco, supported by Shannon Wassman. And of course, all of this could not have been done without the support of Kim Nelly as well. So I do want to just thank all of our piloting teachers, as well as Kim, for this work that went into this so that we could pilot these two curricular resources. And at each of the grade levels, we had those two teachers, one teacher teaching Bookworms and one teacher teaching Witten Wisdom. And so on the daily, so they were comparing and contrasting the curricular resource, looking at what students were able to do. So those conversations happened daily. Then with literacy consultants supporting those two grade levels, conversations were happening two to three times a week. And then weekly, the entire CAT or Collaborative Action Team met, and we would review what was going on in the classrooms, looking at what students were able to do and their student work, to be able to get the feedback on Bookworms and Witten Wisdom. Now, as a collaborative action team, we used our vision of the graduate as our North Star. And teachers, we asked them, "What do you value in a knowledge-building curriculum?" And after gathering all of that feedback, we were able to narrow it down to three, sorry, six different criteria. So materials were really important, scope and sequence, instructional approaches, student engagement, professional learning and support, and then transference of skills. And with that criteria, I was then able to create an evaluative system of questions that the piloting teachers then measured against Witten Wisdom and Bookworms. So I'm going to share with you a couple of the survey questions that the piloting teachers did complete. So the first one is, "How engaged are your students when using the curricular resource?" And you can see that Bookworms is twice as engaging as Witten Wisdom. And then when asked, "How likely are you to recommend this resource to a colleague or friend?", again, Bookworms was outweighing Witten Wisdom. And I can say, for all of those six criteria, Bookworms greatly outweighed Witten Wisdom. Then for this final question, "If you had to select a curricular resource for next year, what would you choose?", 11 out of the 12 piloting teachers chose Bookworms, and the one remaining teacher said that they liked both curricular resources, they would be fine with either. I also, in conjunction with quantitative data, really wanted to get qualitative data. So I asked the teachers to answer short questions, and then I selected a couple that would highlight the consensus of the group. So here's one that I have, wanted to just share with you tonight. "I have a classroom with very diverse needs, and this curriculum has still been accessible to all learners. It speaks to the equity and joy of the program." And from students, "The words, the super sentences. You get to find out the definitions and practice writing good sentences. I also like the books we are reading. The written responses help me to understand what is going on in the book. I love this book. Can I read my book again?" Don't we want that for all students? And then we had the likely fortune of piloting this curricular resource during parent-teacher conferences, and teachers remarked that they had never had so many parents share about what their child was learning. So I just have a few quotes from parents that I wanted to highlight tonight. "I've never heard my child so excited about a book or school. This is the first time I have seen my son interested in learning and excited about it. He has never cared for reading or being read to, but he comes home asking to read and telling us about the stories you're reading in class." And then finally, because Bookworms utilizes books that are above grade level during their shared reading experience, we really are addressing the whole child. So we have the span of readers in our classroom. We have students that are below grade level, and we have students that are above grade level, and students that are right on grade level. Well, with Bookworms, this one parent of a struggling reader shared, "I like that my child who struggles with reading is able to access grade-level text through the choral reading. He came home excited to discuss the book he was reading in class." So now we're having this opportunity for students that are struggling readers and students that are above grade level readers to be talking about and accessing books through choral reading with high-level discussion and feeling successful in school. So here are some pictures that I snapped to be able to share with you, from first grade all the way to fifth grade. In the bottom, let's see if I can shine the light. Down here in a second-grade classroom, you can see shared reading taking place, which is where every student has a book in their hand, and they're reading along with their teacher. And then over here in this other corner, you see we have some fifth graders. They are super excited to share their super sentences that have all of the different parts of speech, and they have color-coded them, and they were just begging me to come back and see what they were writing. They couldn't wait to share and give feedback to their partnerships with those vertical whiteboards. And you can see that text structure is taught through thinking maps, there's written responses, there's a vocabulary wall. So this is Bookworms in action. Now, Bookworms is structured into four, sorry, three 45-minute blocks. The first one being shared reading, and you'll notice that I put 35 minutes to 45 minutes. Bookworms does have a word study component, however. have a word study component. However, in the younger grades, we're going to continue with UFLY since it's a good gold standard phonics curricular resource. And so we'll continue with that. And that way, we would save 10 minutes of our shared reading block. But in shared reading, we have vocabulary instruction, choral reading, which will help build that fluency component, and then discussion with comprehension. So we're addressing high-level thinking skills. Then with the ELA block, it's broken up into two parts. So you have genre-based writing, where students are writing narrative pieces, opinion pieces, informational pieces. And then other times, they're having an interactive read aloud with well-above-grade-level text and high-level thinking that is happening. And also, sentence composition and grammar and mechanics instruction is taking place. And then finally, we have the DI block, or the differentiated instruction block. And this is where teachers can meet the needs of their students through targeted instruction, as well as independent reading would take place, and students would have the opportunity to work on written responses. We're working as an administrative team to try to address all of these instructional minutes, because it is a little bit of a shift from what we currently have. So we may not be fulfilling all 45-minute blocks, but we're working towards that as we start to roll out Bookworms and see what our instructional minutes are. But we will be able to have the three blocks of shared reading, ELA, and DI. So as you can see and as you've heard, all of the competencies of the vision of the graduate are addressed through Bookworms. So you've got the critical thinking and problem solving when students are making inferences and analyzing themes, communication when they're talking with partners about the text, or they're answering high-level questions, curiosity when they're engaging about learning about diverse cultures or scientific concepts, and then empathy, compassion, social emotional readiness when they are exploring those diverse perspectives, and they are collaborating with their peers. So here's our summary of cost. We already have $300,000 earmarked from our financial committee from last year.
This is from, yeah, the money that we had approached the government about last year.
So it's not going to be impacting this year's budget. You'll see that a little less than $220,000 goes towards our one-time purchase of all of the resources for Bookworms K5. And then we do have about a little under $40,000 that is going to workbooks. That is something that we're going to be adjusting and reevaluating as we roll out the curricular resource. Right now, we want to roll it out with the workbooks and then see from feedback from the teachers about whether or not the workbook is something that we need to have as an annual cost or not. And then we also have a little over $31,000 earmarked for new SMARTboards, because we have to replace some of the SMARTboards in classrooms. And with this curricular resource, we want to be able to have students be able to access the SMARTboard when writing super sentences and the teacher modeling that, or with a document camera and sharing the text with the students. And then finally, we have $12,000 of that overall amount for professional development from people that are recommended from Bookworms and the University of Delaware to be coming and training our literacy consultants and our piloting teachers to be training of the trainers, so that then they will lead their grade level in supporting the implementation of Bookworms. So we do have a professional development schedule to support the implementation. And currently, all of the Wit and Wisdom piloting teachers loved hearing about Bookworms so much that they said, instead of going back to our old curricular resource, can we please continue with our knowledge building curriculum and implement Bookworms? And I was like, absolutely. So now we have two teachers at every grade level using Bookworms with students, and they're kind of leading the leads of that grade level. We're also participating in affinity group meetings with our area RESCs, where other districts in the area that are implementing Bookworms or piloting Bookworms were able to collaborate with one another and problem-solve those instructional minute conversations and hear how other districts are making it all fit. And then in March, we'll have PD on the 14th, where I'm going to be working with every single grade level for two hours to go through the different components of Bookworms to help build classroom teachers' background knowledge on the instructional shifts with shared reading, as well as with the ELA block. And in June, we'll have that professional development from the trainers from the University of Delaware coming to be able to support our Bookworms implementation. And then finally, in August, we'll take all of that training that we had in June to be able to have a full PD opportunity for all classroom teachers. And then the literacy coaches will roll out coaching cycles where they'll be able to support teachers throughout the entire year next year. So here you can see the districts in the area that have adopted Bookworms. And the ones in bold are the ones that I have directly been in contact with and have been collaborating with. But all of these districts have, they're either piloting Bookworms, or they're fully implementing it. So you can see that it is really popular. And then, at no cost to the district, because we're a part of that affinity group through our area RESCs, CES, we've been given from the state 12 coaching hours. So currently, we're working with a literacy consultant out of CES who is able to come and work with our literacy coaches to help build their capacity and experience in coaching teachers and working with teachers so that when we do roll out Bookworms next year, they'll be skilled to be able to coach and support those teachers. And then next, for 10 months, we were one of 40 districts that applied for this 10 months of support, of implementation support from an agency, a nonprofit agency called TNTP, or the New Teacher Project. And so there are 11 districts that were selected, and Monroe was one of them. So I'm really excited, because TNTP uses implementation science to be able to support the implementation of new curricular resources. So at no cost to the district, we're going to have 10 months of implementation experts working with us with site visits and helping us to calibrate our literacy practices and with our literacy, our district leadership to be able to create that literacy vision and implementation plan for Bookworms. So as you can see, with Hegarty, our phonemic awareness curricular resource, and UFLY Foundations as our phonics resource, and then adding in Bookworms, we will have a robust and comprehensive literacy experience for all of our students K5 in Monroe. And all of this will help us to advance our vision of the graduate competencies. And I invite any of you to come and see Bookworms in action, or even Hegarty and UFLY. We would love to have you in our schools. Thank you so much.
Yeah, there's some great things happening in the elementary schools. I know Greg got a chance to go around and see some of the math classes, but please take care of on that offer to visit. There's some really good things happening.
Questions. Paul, have any of the SMARTboards already budgeted?
He may have some replacements. I'd have to go back and dig them up.
A second, lower that a little.
I think there's also some manipulation with the SMARTboards that the kids do.
And the other thing, with those facilities that you're checking in our DIRK, have they had it for a while so we can see what their vocab scores were compared to where we were?
I haven't looked at their scores, but I can look into that. Absolutely.
To see, you know, if those who had it for a while.
Absolutely.
It's definitely better.
And I can say that, you know, looking at our AIMS Web scores that we do have, they do measure vocabulary. And then just with the addition of UFLY alone, we're noticing such a huge impact on our scores with AIMS Web. And then in the classrooms where Bookworms has been present, I just know recently, when I was meeting with second grade today at Monroe L, just looking at their vocab scores, I mean, it has made an impact just in this short period of time. So I'll definitely look into that with other DIRKs.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
This satisfies our, I'm sorry, this satisfies the waiver.
It does. Yes.
Just to, I don't want to steal your fund, but if I'm mischaracterizing this, some of the highlights of today, we had from the first half, we had 16 students in tier-three interventions in second grade at Monroe L. On the first go-around with AIMS Web, that was down to six students. We've seen some really nice gains with the work being done, especially with UFLY right now.
Absolutely.
This is going to be incorporated across the board then with the tiered interventions and the classroom teachers?
Yes.
So they're all working together.
Yes. So with tiered intervention, that's really specialized instruction that's happening with those intervention specialists for tiers two and tiers three, with our literacy specialists or literacy interventionists that have specialized training with OG approaches. So they're using that. With our classroom teachers, though, through the differentiated instruction block, they'll be able to differentiate their instruction to meet those students' needs. Does that answer your question with that?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it was across the board, like, if, you know, a student is struggling, they need tier-three intervention, would they be working on this program, or would they be working on a different program, OJ or whatever?
So with our tier-three students, we have to actually look at what kind of intervention they would need. And so Bookworms being more of a knowledge building, so comprehension, vocabulary, or fluency, then those approaches would be good to support students with deficits in those areas. And then if you have a student that needs phonics instruction or phonemic awareness instruction, then the literacy interventionists and literacy consultants, they're using more of that OG approach, which is very structured instruction for phonics. So it just depends on what the student needs, but everything kind of feeds together to be able to support the whole literacy picture for that student. Does that help answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
Do you bucket analogy?
I know. So, do you want me to?
Sure.
I mean, I can. Okay. Okay. No, no. So I heard that, or a good analogy that I like to use is, when we're teaching reading, we're always trying to fill a student's bucket. And we always have to fill the bottom of, the holes at the bottom of the bucket first. So if you think about phonemic awareness, are the holes at the bottom, then phonics, then fluency, and then comprehension. And so if one student has phonemic awareness skills and those holes are filled, you can start to work on phonics skills, which is when you, you know, attach the sound and the letter together to be able to read the word. And then, once a student's able to read individual words, they string them together, that's fluency. And then once you can read a string of words, then you can understand it and comprehend it. So that's comprehension. And so when we see what deficits a student has, then we are able to target it and kind of fill those holes. But you always want to start with the holes at the bottom and then build up to be able to then address comprehension.
Thank you.
I got one question, though.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Outside your purview, but, you know.
No, no.
And they still have two months off in the summer.
Yes.
Is there any way we can get some of this program in, or similar section in the public library, to have them do it when they're off?
So really, the best thing that students can do is read. And so it's really getting the involvement of a library card or other resources that are available. So if you're reading along with a story, access to apps like Libby or Hoopla, and educating parents on what's out there to support the students' library programs. But yes, we can definitely share all of the, you know, the techniques and strategies that Bookworms does incorporate. However, it is more of like a nuanced instructional approach of choral reading and then partner reading. However, great approaches that can be applied if, you know, the library's running any specialized programs, that's something that we can share with the library, those instructional techniques for sure.
Great.
And even families. You know, reading aloud to your children is still very important. And then having them chorally read along with books on tape or with a parent is always beneficial, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Kara.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. It's such a joy to be a part of Monroe, and thank you for the warm welcome.
Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, you using this, too?
Yep.
I gotta move again.
Sorry.
You'd think I was short enough to be able to see it.
I know during budget time, I kind of previewed this a little, or set this up a little bit as we talked about the need for the art, no, and music teacher.
Music teacher.
At, you know, the middle school, elementary school, high school, to help do this. I know one of the things that we're always looking at at high schools, how can we maximize instructional time, whether it's instructional minutes or contact time. And I think the high school has been really grappling with this for the past couple of years, and kind of this is the culmination of that, and some changes that they'd like to make that I think would be really good for kids.
All right. So Joe's done my presentation. No. So I wanted to, and I know this is small, but that's okay. So essentially, on the left, you see the schedule that was at Massey for probably well over a decade. It was essentially 45-minute periods, eight, you know, it might have been seven periods at one time, but essentially eight 45-minute periods. Lunch was either period five, six, or seven, so a student could take seven classes and then have a lunch for 45 minutes during the day. A little bit different back then, because the graduation requirements were 21 and a half, or 21, or maybe even down to 20 if you go really far back. But graduation requirements weren't 25 credits. So the decision was made to go to a block schedule. That decision was made, I think, the year before I became the principal. The implementation of that block schedule wasn't supposed to happen until 21, 22, but, you know, COVID changed that, and it was decided in the summer of 2020 to go into the block schedule. So the first year of the block schedule, we did not have the flex period. That was the, you know, cohort A, cohort B, cohort C, no flex, year of fun. And then for the last few years, we've been running the schedule that's there on the right with a flex period, which is essentially just a redistribution of instructional time, where, again, the students who needed to hear things, you know, more often than, say, twice in a class, could be pulled in by teachers. There's also fun things that go on during that time. It's a stress breaker as well. So it's used for a lot of different things, the flex period. But that's the schedule. Going from the one on the left to the one on the right, I think I've said this before, on the one on the left, if you take out the exam days, classes met 173 days for 45 minutes. So it was a lot of instructional time, probably 7,400 roughly. I don't remember the exact number. What we're in now, the classes meet about 86 times a year, so about half as much. Four 75 minutes instructional time lost was probably over 1,000 minutes per class. Okay? If you factor in the flex period and teachers utilize that time as redistributed instructional time, you know, you could, depending on how often the kid met with the teacher, you get more instructional minutes. So why change, right? So here are kind of the driving forces of that. You know, going from, you know, meeting five days a week, 173 days a year, to 86 every other day. There's pros and cons to any schedule. But what we're finding with our students now is we need to provide them more consistency of instruction. And if you take a regular five-day week, and let's say the classes meet on Tuesday, Thursday, okay, well, what if the student's out on Tuesday and the teacher's out on Thursday? You've got a whole week of, not, I mean, it's not lost, but there's not teacher-student contact necessarily. And then if you also factor in, okay, you meet on Thursday and we have a three-day weekend, you don't see those classes again until the following Tuesday. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of times during a school schedule where, you know, instruction is not very consistent. And therefore, the continuity of those learning experiences is even harder, right? It also is more limiting to the amount of feedback that teachers can give students, which, how do you learn? You don't learn from, if you do everything right, you're not really learning anything, because you know it all. You learn from making mistakes and getting feedback. And then also with 75 minutes, teacher-kids attention spans have drastically diminished. And we're asking them to, yes, we're asking them to only focus on four subjects a day, but for longer periods of time. Okay? Again, I think it's something that is challenging for our students. Challenges, when we looked at schedules, we have shared staff, we have shared spaces, and we have students that go to programs outside of Massey. All of those factor into the process of choosing a schedule. When you look at, and we looked at eight drop two, rotating morning, rotating afternoon, we looked at everything. And one of those three challenges got in the way of almost every other schedule. So then we started looking at, well, if the first schedule I showed you, the one that was in place through 2020 worked, and the one we're in now worked with shared spaces and staff, was there a way to combine the two? So that's what we've kind of done. We've combined the best, if you will, of the last two schedules into creating one new schedule. So essentially, on a full five-day week, Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays would be a straight eight period. a straight eight-period schedule, and Tuesdays and Thursdays would still remain block days, just like we have now.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays?
Tuesdays and Wednesdays, yeah, sorry. Including a flex period in there. The other thing that I've been working with Dustin, Tim from Witten's, et cetera, is on our straight eight days so that we don't have to have three lunch waves, repurposing some spaces so that we could go down to two lunch waves on those days. Because for a 42-minute period, you can't go, if you had a third wave in the middle, it would mean you would go to class for about 20 minutes, 25 minutes. You'd go to lunch for 25 minutes. And then you would come back, you'd have to come back for at least 25, 30 minutes because you have to have a certain amount of time. So what that would mean is the lunch period would have to be, the shortest you can have three lunch waves and satisfy everything, including the teacher's contract, is 85 minutes. So you'd have to have a lunch period of 85 minutes. It would take all of the rest of the periods down to about 39, 40 minutes. So by going down to two lunch waves that are a little bit longer to afford Witten's the time to service more students, it enables us to keep the instructional time as high as possible. So essentially, during period six, you either go to lunch and then to class, or you go to class and then to lunch. We're going to keep the three waves on the block days because I just think it's better. But there, you're breaking up, again, a 75-minute period. It's much more doable in terms of instructionally. What does that do? So it increases instructional time, both minutes, okay? So we get about half of what was lost instructional minutes back. And the second one is the most important one. It increases contact days from that 86 to just under 140, almost 60% more days of contact. So right now, our classes meet two to three times a week. On a full five-day week, they would be guaranteed to be four days a week. Therefore, you know, again, providing more opportunity for that feedback cycle through formative assessments. And as we all know, again, timely, actionable feedback is the best way to improve student learning outcomes. I also think the mix of the short and long periods will increase student engagement. So if you go, if I go back and circle back to the end, what were we looking for? More consistent instruction, more continuity of learning experience, more opportunities for frequent feedback, increased student engagement, and we keep flex. We're not actually implementing that first schedule that I showed you that Massey had through 2020 because if we were to try and implement that schedule, we would lose common planning time. And if we don't keep the block, we would lose flex. And I'll share with Joe, well, I shared with Joe, but I'll have him share it with you in the week in review. I just submitted our three-year NIAS progress report. And if you remember, the, a lot of the commendations that we received in our decennial visit a few years ago centered around the fact that we provide teachers with common planning time and we implemented a flex period.
I applaud you, I do. I mean, you actually sat there and you thought outside the box. My question is, you're probably the only high school in the state.
No.
Oh, you're not? Good.
Nope.
Help me out.
Newington High School also runs it. Oxford High School used to run it.
Awesome.
Actually, the school I left to come here runs it.
So you understand how it works? You've had the feedback on it?
Correct.
Awesome state.
So we did bring, we did, teachers were part of the process. We didn't bring teachers in to look at carte blanche, any schedule that was out there because with the instructional leaders, Ms. Peterson and Mr. Lowell, we went through all of the, pretty much all the schedules in the state. And whether it's shared staff, shared spaces, or the external programming that our kids go to, they're just, they weren't viable options. Now, we could go back to a straight eight, okay? But what I don't like about the straight eight is it doesn't add the flexibility of the longer periods.
I think this is.
We don't have, for labs, we don't have the staffing to go back to a science class with a lab period attached to it. We just can't do it. And 45 minutes, you know, again, in this day and age, doesn't afford you the opportunity to, you'll get into something where things are just getting good in the battle rakes. And that's going to happen at some point in time. It's going to be a shift, again, for teachers in the planning process, you know, but they can plan for those longer engaging type things for the block days.
I think it's awesome. You seem excited about it. So I'm excited.
You know, change is tough, Jerry. Anytime you change anything, it's tough, you know? But I do think once, once we're in it and we're experiencing it, I think teachers will, I think the four days a week will mean a lot. I think kids will get more out of that than they're getting out of flex right now. Flex down to two days a week will be a challenge for some because some are thriving in our current schedule. It's, I mean, that's just, they are. But I think we have a growing percentage of kids that are really struggling with the lack of continuity because classes meet twice a week sometimes in that three days. It's just not enough.
Still doesn't address the lengthy times. You okay with that? I mean, from a teacher perspective and a student perspective?
In terms of once a week?
The longer, yeah.
Yeah, I think the fact that it is only once a week, so every class is just that once, that long, yeah. I think it's gonna, you know, the teachers spent the last four years kind of perfecting planning in the block period. Those plans aren't for nothing, you know, but they're gonna, there's going to be some adjustments that'll have to be made for sure.
Been talking to, I know I talked to some folks that taught over an option when they had this. I don't know what the reason was, they switched out of this, but that was their favorite, that was their favorite schedule. And there's a lot of schedules out there. It's a really, it's a fun activity, but, you know, there's a lot of things going on. There's schools that do trimesters. There's some really impressive things that they can do with that. There's some that do eight drop two, a lot of things. I know a lot of that, you know, Steve and his group looked at, but we have a lot of constraints. And, you know, we share a facility with STEM right now. We share a lot of staff, we've talked about that, and do that, all those things might constrain us. RCA, Aqua, you know, makes it difficult to have rotating periods and things of that nature because things change.
The other thing with the straight eight would be, we would push STEM lunch back to about 1:15. They would be eating lunch at 1:15.
And then leaving.
Pretty much.
Pretty much. Yeah. So I mean, as it is, they don't eat till 12:45. We'd push it back in another half an hour if we were to go to that. That's just not, it's not really right.
I think it's awesome.
So every high school kind of does something a little differently, it sounds like?
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of different schedules out there. I'd be, if you want the research we put in on passing along, you can take a look.
Nah, it's okay.
You're welcome to it. We didn't, we didn't get rid of it, but it's just, like I said, it's even, you know, again, with the, with the music teacher, you know, the fact that our block days will have to switch to 1357 and 2468 from what they are now, just so that period three, our music teachers can be at Massey at that time. And whether it's a block or the straight eight, they start right around the same time. So we had to factor all of that in. It's, it was not fun.
Anything else for Steve? Yeah, all right.
Thanks.
No? All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Joe, anything else?
That's it.
Ladies and gentlemen, anything else? Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Can I have a second? Christine, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, unanimous. Good night, everybody.